Twenty twenty one, Twalton City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight over Zoom. We have first item on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance, tonight led by Councilor Hillier.
Evening all, if you'll please place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Oh, my gosh.
And to the Republic.
And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, my screen went blank and I wasn't sure if I was here. I'm so sorry.
Darn Zoom. All right, thank you. Next, we have the moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID nineteen, led by Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, as we're looking at this new chapter and dealing with the pandemic with the Delta variant being more pervasive, and I just invite the public to, and remind the public that we're continuing to wear a mask now as advised again, and to be careful with your friends and neighbors for people that, there's such a different story about people that haven't been able to get vaccinated or can't get vaccinated for different reasons than the other ways. And also, there's these bleed-through cases, so please, if you're experiencing symptoms, try to go see a professional right away and make sure that you're taking good care of your health, and that reducing the infection rate and being careful with each other will help our hospital capacity, which is a really important thing to consider, because we also take patients from outside of our area. So I just want to bring all those things to the floor, and in the spirit of that, and the way that a lot of lives have been changed, altered, and lost, I just invite you to join me in a moment of silence for those we've lost to COVID nineteen and those that are still suffering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks, and just as a heads up for folks who do business in person with the city, that effective Wednesday, all employees of the City of Twalton indoors will be wearing masks, and we're going to ask any visitors to wear masks also to protect everyone, you know, due to the new variants and breakthrough viruses, all the stuff that Councilor Brooks just mentioned, we want to be, make sure our city staff is safe. So, starting Wednesday in all city facilities indoors, you need to wear masks in order to enter the facility. But with that, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding items that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Bates, do you have anybody at the poll center?
There is no one at the poll center, Mayor.
All right. Does anyone inside the Zoom meeting like to have a public comment? Screen, I'm switching between screens, I don't see any hands up, all right? Going once, twice, switch again, all right? Not seeing any hands for public comment. Okay, that moves us on to the consent, consent agenda, those items considered routine, it will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like them removed and heard later separately tonight. Consent tonight, consent agenda tonight consists of two items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. And item number two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for X golf.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? Seeing none. Councilor Hillier?
Aye.
Councilor Sacco?
Aye.
Councilor Pratt?
Aye.
Councilor Brooks?
Aye.
Pictures just shifted, so it's not just you, Cindy. Council President Crabb?
Aye.
And I'm not too sure, Council Reyes, are you on the phone?
I think so.
I think she's muted.
Yeah, I believe she's with us.
Yeah, I see her number, but I think she's muted. I guess we still have enough.
Maria, are you there?
I think we've got the votes, it's, oh, I mean, it's the six of us that voted, I think it passes, the consent agenda is passed as read tonight. All right, moving on, item number one, we have a quasi judicial public hearing. Our first one is a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance creating a southwest and Basalt Creek development area, urban renewal area, and plan. This is a public hearing under O R S four five seven dot one twenty, but if city council would consider adopting the southwest Basalt Creek urban renewal plan. The criteria for adopting an urban renewal plan are considered, are contained in O R S four five seven dot zero five, to O R S four five seven dot zero nine five, and other applicable provisions in O R S Chapter four five seven. The hearing tonight, the hearing tonight will be conducted at clubs. First, city staff will make a presentation. Next, the council will hear from members of the public who wish to testify in favor of the plan, followed by members of the public who wish to testify against the plan, followed by anyone else who wishes to testify about the plan itself. Then, upon conclusion of public testimony, individual councillors may ask questions of city staff and any person who provided testimony. After council questions are finished, the council will consider whether to direct staff to bring back the ordinance for consideration for final adoption at the next meeting. Does any member of the council wish to abstain from participating in this hearing? I'm not seeing any heads nodding, all right? So, city staff will not begin their presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jonathan Taylor, I'm Economic Development Manager for the City of Twalton. Along with Elaine Howard, our Urban Renewal Consultant, tonight we are going to propose the proposed urban renewal efforts under the public hearing as you outline under O R S four five seven. Tonight, we will go through a background of what urban renewal is and how it is funded, the city's past urban renewal efforts, and our proposed urban renewal effort in the southwest and Salt Creek concept area. For the crash course, Elaine Howard will go over some of the terminology in the U R A. Elaine, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be with you this evening. The urban renewal terminology is always a little confusing, so it helps to go over some of it at the beginning. U R stands for urban renewal. U R A and urban renewal area, U R D and urban renewal district, which are both the same, it's just some cities like to call them areas and some cities like to call them districts. T I F is either tax increment funds or tax increment financing, and we'll talk about what that is. M I is maximum indebtedness, that is the total amount of money you may spend on projects and programs over the life of an urban renewal area. A V is assessed value, which is different from real market value, assessed value is that value on which you pay your property tax bills. And the T D C is the Twalton Development Commission, which is the city of Twalton's urban renewal agency. Just a little crash course on what urban renewal is and how it works. So, urban renewal works off of property tax revenue increases. It is not a new property tax, it just works off of the increases in taxes we all pay. The increases in taxes in Oregon only go up for two different reasons. They go up because of a three percent appreciation, that is a limit, and they go up because of substantial improvements or new construction inside, in any boundary. Our property tax revenues go to all the regular taxing jurisdictions unless an urban renewal area is formed. And when an urban renewal area is formed, the assessor establishes the value of the area within the properties, within the urban renewal area, and establishes what's called a frozen base. All the regular taxing jurisdictions keep getting their money off of that frozen base, but any increase in property tax revenue in the urban renewal area after the adoption of the plan, so in the future as the area lives, goes to the urban renewal agency to do projects and programs within the urban renewal area. Next slide. Back to Jonathan.
So, we'll go over briefly of Twalton's U R A background, which includes the Leventon Tax Increment District and the Central Urban Renewal District. So, one primary, so really, the Leventon Tax Increment District is one of the notable urban renewal success accomplishments in the state of Oregon. Established in nineteen eighty-five, it incorporated over two hundred acres of unincorporated greenfield, which means those that are outside the municipal limits of the city of Twalton. It prioritized four goals of industrial development, protection of the environment, improved traffic and transportation, and provided public utilities. The original assessed valuation in nineteen eighty-five was three point five million dollars, and to the right on the screen is the current urban renewal district of Leventon. So what was the success of the Leventon Tax Increment District? So it ceased collection in two thousand and ten, which meant that tax increment financing was no longer collected after this date, and the remaining increment went back to the taxing jurisdictions that overlapped this area. It increased the assessed valuation through the projects and funds that were identified in the plan by two hundred and fifty-one million dollars. It completed fourteen of the twenty projects that the plan identified. Those notable projects included Herman Road, brand-new street construction of one eighteen, Leventon, and one twenty-fourth. And currently, it has over fifty businesses and nine thousand jobs currently. One of the other successes in Twalton's urban renewal history was the Central Urban Renewal District. This district was established in nineteen seventy-five, and it was much different from Leventon. Instead of greenfield development, this development was redevelopment for over three hundred acres. And one of the primary and most notable accomplishments was the conversion of a urban food company, which was a dog food company, into the Twalton Commons. Unlike the Leventon Plan, this plan prioritized eleven rules, and some of those included commercial development, housing development, pedestrian bike lanes, and design considerations. In nineteen seventy-five, the original assessed valuation is fourteen million dollars. The success of our urban renewal district in the central urban renewal area was it converted over three hundred and twenty-seven, three hundred and twenty-seven city acres that were redeveloped. Forty-one of sixty projects of the plan were completed, and it increased the assessed valuation by a hundred, a hundred and eighty million dollars. Some of the other notable accomplishments in addition to the Twalton Commons was the Twalton Sherwood Bypass, the Nyberg I five interchange, or area parking, and the Twalton City Library. In addition to renovating industrial area in the downtown and enhanced community pride. So where are we at today in our efforts for the southwest and the Salt Creek development area? The city has spent over fifteen years of work to identify land use and infrastructure needs in the proposed urban renewal area. In two thousand and five, the southwest Twalton Concept Plan, along with the two thousand and ten update, showcased what was needed in the southwest part of Twalton. In two thousand and fourteen, the City of Twalton updated its transportation system plan, which identified major infrastructure needs with transportation in both areas. In two thousand and nineteen, the Salt Creek Concept Plan was adopted, and then in two thousand and nineteen, Twalton twenty forty, which provided economic opportunities analysis and housing needs analysis, which identified employment and residential land deficiencies. Through all these processes, as well as the last three years, the city needs are pretty apparent. We have industrial land deficient, we are residentially land deficient, and we have strained transportation systems. As noted in multiple presentations, as well as council direction, council priorities include improved transportation systems, prepare for mixed and increased density, along with mixed-use development, and natural environment promotion and protection. The City of Twalton has taken a phased approach, slow and methodical, in order to get what is right and what is needed. As noted earlier, in two thousand and eighteen, started the foundation with Twalton twenty forty with our economic opportunities analysis and housing needs analysis. In two thousand and nineteen, we provided our city council, as well as the public and art, with an education series on what urban renewal was and what is the long-term goal for the City of Twalton. In addition, while heard, which is our central urban renewal district ceased collection in two thousand and ten, we officially closed that district and transferred the remaining properties to the City of Twalton. Last year in two thousand and twenty, Elaine Howard and Nick Poppadu provided a U R A feasibility study for both the Basalt Creek and southwest industrial area. And this year, in addition to this project, we've identified Leventon, as well as District Two Vision. But today, we are at the District One Plan Adoption Consideration. And just a brief recap of what the project goal is, this entire process, was to develop an urban renewal plan to finance and implement identified projects from existing area development plans, including the Salt Creek Concept Plan, the Southwest Twalton Concept Plan, and Twalton twenty forty. And below is the timeline that we've kicked off and where we are at today with the public hearing. In addition to the noted outreach in the last ten and fifteen years, the Twalton Development Commission appointed a seven-member task force to provide and recommend the proposed boundary and projects, and to review the proposed plan financial analysis. This task force met over four meetings beginning in March. The proposed boundary and projects were voted and recommended by the task force. There is a dissenting opinion that we've linked in your packet. The task force members included Janelle Thompson of our Planning Commission, Chief Holden from T V F N R, Grace Lucchini, which is an area property owner, Councilor Sacco from the City of Twalton City Council, Teresa Haskins from P G E, and Gillian Felton from Community Partners for Affordable Houses. And a brief recap, on July, on June twenty-eighth, the Twalton Development Commission approved Resolution six twenty-eight that formally approved and implemented the public review process, which we are currently in for the forty-five day consultant confer. On July fifteenth, the Twalton Planning Commission found that both the southwest and the Salt Creek Concept Area Development Plan conformed with both the Twalton Development Code and the Twalton Comprehensive Plan. Their recommendation will be considered tonight by the Twalton City Council. There are five planning goals, and I will let Elaine go over those. Elaine, you're on mute again.
I'm sorry, this is my third meeting in a row, and I must be tired. So, the plan goals are public involvement, goal two, employment and land develop, employment land development, goal three, transportation infrastructure, goal four, utility infrastructure, and goal five, developer assistance and incentives. And with all of those plan goals are objectives that follow them, that talk about the different components of each goal within the plan. Next slide, please. This is the proposed urban renewal area. It is a little over seven hundred and seventeen acres and includes both the southwest industrial area and the Basalt Creek Concept Plan area. It is tied together on the west by what's called a cherry stem, because in, in Oregon, it is deemed that urban renewal areas must be contiguous or tied together in some manner. Next slide. This just shows the different zoning designations within the area, and as you can see, it is largely an industrial area, a small bit of commercial at the south end, and then residential properties also in the southern end. Next slide. There are restrictions in urban renewal statutes about how much of a city may be in an urban renewal area, and that is citywide, so you may have more than one urban renewal area. The totals of those for a city your size may not exceed twenty-five percent. The acreage of this proposed area is thirteen point six eight percent. The assessed value is two, just a little over two percent. So very low on the assessed value. Sorry, Jonathan. Back to you?
Yes, so we've had two proposed citizen projects of the force of the task force, both from Grace Lucchini, which is a property owner. Ms. Lucchini proposed adding a stormwater management plan to the U R A plan. As noted in your staff packet, staff does not recommend this for final consideration due to the City of Twalton budgeting one hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two for this project. We felt that the need since the City of Twalton, which is an independent legal jurisdiction separate from the T D C, that it would be double dipping and not serve the larger benefit of both the general fund and the long-term taxes and financing fund. Ms. Lucchini also proposed a natural resource protection plan by identifying and planning to protect those natural resources in the area. After multiple conversations with Ms. Lucchini, as well as other stakeholders, staff is now recommending this project. However, in the future, the city council must direct the Twalton Development Commission to actually do the work. So we can put this in the plan tonight or in the future, but because this is a land use decision, it just has to be a simple direction from the Twalton City Council. So we recommend to include that. A brief recap on the Washington County work session. On August third, because of unincorporated areas in the proposed urban renewal area, staff was required to present to the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Staff included myself, City Manager Cheryl Lambos, and our consultant Elaine Howard. Commissioners reviewed the plan, the boundary, and the proposed project, and indicated their overall support for the urban renewal plan. They have requested, based on previous agreements and regional cooperation, to include the Salt Creek Concept Plan in the proposed project list. And here, as noted in the last several meetings with the Twalton Development Commission, as well as city council, these are the proposed area projects. We've identified transportation based on our goals, as well as sewer, water, natural resource protection plan, property mitigation, small business grants, financing fees, and administration. The constant dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is twenty-nine thousand, or twenty-nine million dollars, but the year expenditures for inflation is fifty million. The changes in the project list include those that were just recommended by the Washington County Board of Commissioners, as well as the inclusion of the citizens of those projects by the natural resource protection. Elaine?
This shows the projected tax increment financing, T I F, revenue over the life of the area. This is a thirty-year plan projection using a six percent projected assessed value, A V, growth. The total net tax increment funds is sixty million, seven hundred thousand. The maximum indebtedness is fifty-three million, two hundred thousand. That is a firm number, that number, if adopted, does not change. The total net T I F might change depending on whether or not the financing assumptions used in the preparation of the financial projections are the same, and they are never exactly the same, because interest rates vary and loan terms vary. So we use what would be an average finance assumption to come up with the total net T I F. The capacity, then, in taking that maximum indebtedness, which goes over a thirty-year time period, back to capacity in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dollars, is twenty-nine million dollars for projects. In the early years of any urban renewal area, there is not significant funding. So in years one through five, there is projected to be around six hundred thousand dollars. In year six through ten, that increases, because you then would be able to place a bond to get more money upfront to do projects within the area. The next five-year increments are about the same, increasing as it gets towards the end of the urban renewal area. The next steps are, we're currently within the forty-five day consultant confer period. That will end before this comes back to the city council for formal plan adoption consideration. On August seventeenth, the Washington County Board of Commissioners will consider approval of the plan due to the inclusion of unincorporated properties within the plan area. The city council, if they move ahead tonight, would consider the adoption of the ordinance on August twenty-third.
All right, so that, thank you for the presentation. So, at this moment, I will hear from members of the public who wish to testify in favor of the plan. And do I have anybody at the poll center, Bates?
There is no one at the poll center, Mayor. I do have two requests to speak, but not four.
Okay. So is anyone in the Zoom meeting that hasn't notified Bates that they'd like to testify in favor?
I'm in favor, if you can hear me.
Go ahead.
This is Sean Riley, sorry. I own one of the properties in the, in the unincorporated part, right across from Verizon. So, I'm in favor of the plan, I mean, I've always been, but...
Thank you.
Is there, I don't know if there's anything else, this is my first meeting like this anyway, with the Zoom stuff, so it's a little interesting, I can't get my video to work. Probably don't want to see me anyway, but...
All right, thank you, Mr. Riley. So you've voiced your support of the plan. Anyone else in this Zoom meeting who would like to voice their support of the plan? All right, giving none. Now, those, Bates has two people who want to testify in opposition to the plan. So Bates, who's the first person?
Sure, Mayor, the first person is Dan Boss.
Mr. Boss, been a long time since I've seen you, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I guess I don't always pay attention what goes on in the city, I've kind of drifted off in retirement here, but do I still need to give my address or things like that?
No, just state your residence, Twalton, that's fine.
I'm a resident, yeah, I've been here forty-three years in Twalton. The, so I got my notice in my, my water bill about setting up the new district, and I guess I had some concerns about that, so I went through and I looked at your, your studies from the last summer and watched the presentation tonight, read through the ordinance. I guess the, the thing that bothers me the most, and I think it bothers a lot of people in Twalton, at least from all of the surveys we've done in the past, and that's traffic congestion. And all this does is make it worse. There's nothing in the plan that's going to remediate all the impacts of all the jobs that's coming in. Twalton's already a regional jobs provider, you know, whether it's twenty-eight thousand people in Twalton, and we probably have close to that many jobs in Twalton. So we're bringing in probably fifteen thousand people a day into Twalton to be employed, which just adds another thirty thousand or more trips to our already congested streets. I mean, this last year with COVID, I think we've enjoyed kind of looking at Twalton with open streets and an ability to get around town, but as you all know, you know, the last month or two, couple, last couple of months, it's as bad as ever, and it's getting worse. And now, we've got the big residential area that's coming on, on Boones Ferry, the south end, which is going to add a ton of trips, but I don't know, I never saw in the documents how many jobs this was bracketing to bring in, but I know in Leventon, it was mentioned it was nine thousand jobs. So if this area still brings in something similar to that... So if this area still brings in something similar to that, all, all I see it doing for me is leading to more congestion and making it harder to get around Tuolton, making Tuolton livability less. And that's something that you don't have to do. You can still, I mean, development will still happen as development pressures comes on. Developers will work with financing, they'll work with the city's plans on what's going to happen out there. Probably the only thing that wouldn't happen without this that I saw is probably your large park area that you're talking about, where it's going to push money off to the side for a more, a park that's going to serve more than just that area. But personally, I'd rather pay a bond for a parkland and just get that set aside than have taxing for financing do it, just because of the negativity of it. I mean, I knew what we did when we did the downtown area, and it was absolutely, I think, the classic urban renewal center, where you had a fairly blighted downtown, and we had the dog heat plant, but there was a lot of old flood damaged buildings downtown, really small lots. It was a really difficult development area down there. And I think the urban renewal plan did a pretty good job of making it downtown as the best we could at the time with the size of the city. Levitton definitely went out, and it was absolutely going after high-tech jobs, and that was a whole, bring in employment, bring lots of people in, and, and it worked well, too. I don't know, this plan, when I look at it, I know you talked about bringing in more residential, and your slight on the, a little on industrial property, but you can still have all of this development occur without speeding it up, and that's what this plan does. This plan will make it easier for developers to do projects and to build out there. I know at 124th and Tuolton Sherwood Road, if you haven't been out there, you know, last year, it's going crazy out there. I think development will just work its way down the new, the new corridor as it's, as it's feasible to do. So anyway, I would encourage you to take a look at this again. It really just not, I know you're not rushing into it, you've been working on it for the last year, but kind of, unfortunately for me, the first time I heard about setting up a taxing and financing program out there to assist developers in building. I know how the system works, and I know it doesn't affect my taxes directly, but in the future, it affects my ability to have my taxes potentially go down as development comes on because they're paying off the acreage. So anyway, when I looked through it, I just, just, I just saw a lot of more tra, more trips happening, and by you doing this, you're speeding it up. Nothing in the traffic plan that I read, nothing in the other utilities plans really help the rest of the community. It's predominantly just fixing the issues within that zone and dumping traffic out into the rest of the town. So anyway, I would urge you to consider this, or maybe get more public input on the impacts of that, or ask some really focused questions on the traffic impacts to the rest of the town because of the jobs. We don't need more jobs in Tuolton. We already have tons of jobs in Tuolton. So, you know, why do we need to bring in everybody from the surrounding 20-mile area? Anyway, thank you very much. Good to see everybody, and hopefully you have a good summer.
Thank you. Uh, who's the second person, Bates?
Uh, second person is Kathy Holland, Mayor.
Hello, Kathy. How are you? You're muted.
Mute, okay.
There you go.
Now I'm on, in the future, I always want to follow Don Boss because I want to echo the issues he brought up, and then I sent you, sent the City Council an email this afternoon. I don't want to really hit it too hard because I detailed the issues there, but I agree completely with Mr. Boss. I totally support tax increment financing, but this plan right now is something you guys need to take another look at, and I appreciate all the work that Mr. Taylor has done. I have participated in many of his community outreach. I'm one of the few people in the City of Tuolton who follows Washington County Commissioners' meetings, and I understand the Washington County Commissioners are insisting that you add back the extension of the Grams, uh, past Grams Ferry, the Basalt Creek Parkway up to southwest Boones Ferry. I have heard residents who live on southwest Boones Ferry express, I would call it, highly emotional concerns about dumping additional traffic. Mr. Taylor heard those concerns, and that bridge and road extension was not in the budget. Now, I'm well aware that you all can adjust the budget, but that budget went out to the public. It was part of your public notice. Tonight, in the PowerPoint presentation, you brought up that Washington County is not happy that that wasn't in the budget and are insisting that it be included. I think this is a symptom of what Mr. Boss just talked about. I think you need to go back and take another look at this plan and know that your friends out in the community really want a tax increment financing to work, but I don't think this project, as it's currently in front of you, especially with the addition of this bridge. Now, I understand that the TSP includes the bridge, I get it, but what we were told was developers would be tested. This wouldn't be in the project, and developers would be tested traffic studies, including the impact of the bridge. The bridge is intended to connect to the south Stafford Hamlet. I'm one of the few people in Tuolton that's not a member of the council that has contacts in the Stafford Hamlet. Hell will freeze over before they will allow that connecting road to this bridge extension. They have no interest in the next 40, 50 years of ever allowing that extension. So the premise that this thing was put into the TSP is falling apart, and I strongly encourage the council to take another look at it. I applaud the work the staff has done, I, but I think we need to take another look. For all the reasons Mr. Boss said, traffic has exploded, and it has nothing to do with development in Tuolton, and has everything to do with what's happening on I-5. The modifications that they made to I-5 a few years ago have now been fully absorbed, and the interchanges at Wilsonville are failing. Traffic is backing up all the way to where this new bridge would be every day at 2:30. You could widen southwest Boones Ferry, and it won't help, because the problem isn't southwest Boones Ferry, the problem is the I-5 interchange, and I wish it was in your control. I wish all of you could wave a magic wand and solve the problem. I know you can't, but the problem is the problem, and that's what Mr. Boss was talking about. If, if tonight, if you could defer the decision, I understand the vote isn't supposed to be for two weeks, but I would give a challenge to go back. You really need to listen to these residents on southwest Boones Ferry. Okay, I'm about out of time, I'm guessing. So thank you for your time. Read my email, it was put together quickly, and I, I wouldn't want your problems for a million dollars, but, so, do, do listen to these residents, please.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, other folks who didn't let Bates know if they are in opposition, this is your time to speak. Go ahead and shout out. Just scrolling here. All right, so last call for voices in opposition to the plan.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sally Olson, and I am the president of the Martin Assley Woods CIO, and we have been talking about the issues with traffic, as Kathy has mentioned. And we have also been told that with the development of the Basalt Creek area, that there is no plan for even a study of the traffic issues that are current, currently very burdensome to the four CIOs that, that border on southwest Boones Ferry Road. There's no plan for even a study of what's happening now before the proposed development takes place, and, and I personally would like to, to just register my dismay at that because traffic is, is very bad. Monday afternoon at 3 o'clock, it is very bad on Tuolton, on Boones Ferry going south, and I experienced it today. Any day of the week that you go from 2:30 on, it's, Boons Ferry is just solid. To continue to develop the area southwest of there without addressing traffic is, to me, irresponsible. It's, uh, it's just, it's not in the service to the residents. I've been a Tuolton resident for 43 years, Tuolton taxpayer. I've never seen tax, uh, traffic as bad as it is right now, and school is not in session. We have two high schools that feed into southwest Boons Ferry Road. Those aren't even in session now. I'm talking about 3 o'clock in the afternoon on a weekday, and you're ta, and, and we don't have all of the high school traffic involved with that yet. So right now, it's intolerable. School starts in September, it's only going to get worse. I think it's something that needs to be addressed before we agree to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Any other folks who would like to voice their opposition to the plan? Just going back and forth in my screens here, seeing if anyone has their hands up or... All right, so going once, twice, three times, last chance for opposition. All right, so with that, I'll now conclude public testimony, and at this point, councillors may ask questions, city, uh, city staff and any folks who provided public testimony. So this is your time to ask questions, council.
Mayor Birkinik, this is...
Go ahead, if I asked, go ahead, Maria.
Oh, Mayor Birkinik, yeah, so the resident that was there prior to those, uh, comments, she mentioned that there was a study that was not, not made or has not been done. Is that correct?
So you're referring, you wanted, the question's put on Maria because it's kind of hard to hear, I think if I heard it right. Uh, is the question regarding traffic studies not being completed in the area? Can staff address that?
I'll start. There may be other folks here on the line that, that have additional answers. In 2013, when we did the Transportation Refinement Plan, before we did the Basalt Creek Concept Plan work, we did an, uh, Washington County did an extensive transportation analysis count that included all, so there were 18 projects associated with the Transportation Refinement Plan, and the traffic studies were all associated with those 18 projects, and it took into account the jobs that were expected by 2030 in both the southwest Concept Plan area, which I believe, um, by 2030, it's expected there'll be 2,800 jobs in that, in the southwest Concept Plan area, and in the Basalt Creek area, I believe, 1,900 jobs. So a significant number of jobs, and the traffic analysis was based on, on all of, all of those. So it took into account, um, Boons Ferry, Tuolton Sherwood Road, 124th, the extent, the entire Basalt Creek Parkway, improvements to Day Road, um, I'm, I'm missing a few. There were 18 projects that the traffic analysis was complete, was done on.
And you said, what year was that completed, Sherlin?
Um, 2013.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just, you know, it was a question, so I really wanted to make sure that we help answer that question. That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
So I got Counselor Pratt and Counselor Sackar for that.
Oh, gosh, I kind of lost my train of thought here. I guess my, well, to piggyback on Counselor Reyes's question, this traffic study was done, but, I mean, I don't need a traffic study to see what we all see and what's been said here tonight, that we have what I would call a failed traffic area there. I mean, I've seen traffic pass Arapaho from that exit in the afternoon, and so what did those studies show, that we can take on more traffic when we can't handle what we already have? I'm confused as to what those studies showed. And then my second question is, um, this, you know, adding the Basalt Creek extension, I, um, this was, like, we were told this is going to be added on Friday at 6 o'clock or after, and so it, I, it don't feel right that there wasn't time for public comment, and this wasn't put out to the public, or, you know, to be aware of that this was being added, and I'm not sure, I guess, what my question is there, but just, is that typically okay to do? Because it doesn't seem quite right to me.
So I can answer the second question, and I'll leave the first question to other staff that's big people love. The project lists are malleable all the way up until August 23rd for the final adoption by City Council, so any changes tonight can be reflected, both additions or subtractions. It's also important to point out to our citizens' concerns that projects lists after the adoption of the urban renewal plan can always be modified or changed by a simple resolution from the Tuolton Development Commission. So the things that you are seeing tonight aren't established in stone based on Tuolton's 5 through 7 statute requirements. As for the question one, I'll leave that to someone else.
So, yes, Counselor Pratt, the, the, it, the traffic is significant now. I would say that the traffic studies were based on, so we did the Transportation Refinement Plan before we did the land use, setting the zones, and so, um, the, the, we, they deter, the Transportation Refinement Plan determined what improvements could be made, and then there was a trip cap set that basically you couldn't develop more than a certain level of residential and jobs based on those improvements. So, um, it, it did anticipate all of the improvements being made that would contribute to the system. There are no improvements on this, on the Transportation Refinement Plan to I-5, however, that is, you know, and as Ms. Holland pointed out, that's a big facility that Tuolton doesn't have control over, nor does Wilsonville, and, um, Wilsonville has, um, has expressed deep concern over additional transportation, additional, um, impacts to I-5 and that interchange, and they bought in to the belief that these, all of these improvements would help contribute to connectivity in the system and would, and connectivity is a good thing, and connect, the more routes you have, the less impact on the, on individual roads. I, I say that not as a transportation engineer, but the, that's my understanding, is how it works.
I think just, just to add and, and help clarify Sherlin's comments, so there was considerable transportation study at the time of the Transportation Refinement Plan in 2013, but then when the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan Amendments reached their conclusion in 2019, the Metro Regional Transportation Plan had just changed in 2018, and so with the help of Washington County staff, the traffic assumptions that had been generated as part of that original traffic refinement plan were rerun and then included in the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan Amendment. in the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan Amendments. I think it's also worth noting, and just to agree with, with what Sherlin just said, that Ms. Holland is correct. I mean, I think that the overall system is contributing to some of it. And so, although it's outside our transportation system plan, Wilsonville's transportation system plan, for example, has improvements to Day Road to an arterial. They have, um, an over crossing as well over I-5 to help alleviate congestion in the, um, I-5 interchange area, which is at or near, near, near failing in the long term, but that's true. And so, I think that although it's probably not very satisfying to residents, myself have been stuck in the same traffic that everyone have been describing, that this is somewhat of an interim condition until the long-term transportation improvements get built. And I think what people are seeing now is just evidence of the need for those improvements. Hope that helps clarify.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Pratt, or?
I'll just say yes for now.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Sacco, then Councilor Brooks.
Val's question number one was my question, so I feel satisfied with the answer that was given.
Councilor Brooks.
I have a follow-up on the traffic study question, um, because at the, individual meetings that we, that were held, one of the difficult, from what I understood, difficult data to get back was the result of the distribution study from the county. That is the part that speaks to the trip cap that we put in place in that area. So, have you ever gotten that information back?
I, I think I'll just say that it's not in a very digestible format. I mean, it's, in general, traffic studies are a very technical exercise. And so, I think in regards to the question of what would happen if certain segments of the system were not constructed, that's a question that we would still need to seek further answers to as far as how did that specific segment improve it? In, I mean, in a very technical sense, those trip distribution numbers, assuming full build-out of the system, were included, which is basically what is needed to support the zoning. And so, it's, but it's hard to say, kind of, you know, if you build this part and not this part, what happens there? We would need to do, um, get with the county and, and have them do some additional modeling or provide us more figures for that. Does that help? I know it's not a direct answer.
I mean, it kind of does, but, um, but I, I think, I mean, my concern, first of all, I just wanna thank the public for coming out, because this has been really difficult. And, you know, everyone here knows that we passed a bond for traffic to help alleviate congestion. And we can only do so much. And some of the things that we wanted to do, like add additional lane on Toaletan Sherwood Road, we can't do because of restrictions with ODOT or enter the freeway in different ways. So, there's this whole really reality about freeway. And I myself sit right on Boons Ferry in my neighborhood and see it backed up from two thirty during COVID, not during, um, not during school. And so, these, I, um, I agree with the concerns. And then, I also have a really hard time with adding a whole project that's such a controversial project. I could go through six main bullet points of why it's controversial, from safety, traffic congestion, environmental impacts, pollution. I have a list, trust me. And, and to add additional benzene in the air and carcinogens and having truck traffic coming down Boons Ferry Road. So, to just willy-nilly add a line item in, um, and say that this is the same project without having, I mean, we posted this on Friday, we have letters coming in, and this is five minutes in heads of CIOs. So, I am feeling like I wanna slow way down on this. I feel really uncomfortable. And at the same time, I also wanna say that we've worked really hard, the city staff has worked really hard in the backdrop of COVID, of ice storms, of incredible heat, and making sure that people are safe. We have a, this impacts, um, wetlands that go into the Willamette that has an algae bloom that's dangerous to the lives of pets right now. You know, there's, there's so much to this. And it, it, it's, um, it's become much less simple with the, um, just last-minute addition of adding, and I guess that's my other question to staff. Why wasn't that project originally in the plan? Do we, like, is that county-owned? Are we supposed to be paying for the county property now? Or is this gonna be annexed into our city? Or is there a schedule? Like, what's the story with this?
So, the project that was added on Friday is a direct result from the consultant confer period of Washington County that's required. That happened on August third. The original project list, as you pointed out, Councilor Brooks, did not include this, nor did it include the natural environmental protection plan as well. And so, in speaking with not only our stakeholder task force, that included Ms. Lucchini, but also our other CIOs, and also the Chamber of Commerce, that was one of the primary values of the city councils, to make sure that over the course of whatever we decide to do, that the public has the opportunity to be involved. And so, you are correct about the public notice, which we sent out, we've also done the newspapers. But the recent change is a direct result from the request from the Washington County Board of Commissioners based on the assumption and their understanding that a prior agreement by the Toaletan City Council before this current city council is on, was, uh, seated, that there was an agreement for the inclusion of the Basalt Creek Parkway. As for the current project list, um, as noted by Elaine, as well as myself, over the course of this past year, project lists are malleable all the way up until the adoption by this body on August twenty-third. So, if there are changes to be made or additions to be included or deletions to be, um, removed, this body can do that in direct staff. The one thing that city staff did to the CIOs two weeks ago was get feedback on if transportation for this particular area needs to be further examined. That also could be a proposed project for this project list. So, it doesn't preclude this city council from further analyzing the project while also capturing the tax increment financing that is needed if this area is to be successful over the long term. So, if this is delayed, and I have just to point out the pros and cons of this. The pro of this would be to make sure that the citizens and those residents that are looking to provide feedback have adequate opportunity. But also, the con to this is if you don't capture the tax increment finance this year and set the base, there is no money for affordable housing in the area, for natural resource protection. It drastically drops the availability of maximum indebtedness of thirty days. So, it's just a weight that this body has to make.
Okay, and I guess that brings up another question for me is, um, with timing, there's no way of extending that? There's no way of working through that? Because I have a, I have a big conflict with just pushing something through without residents' feedback. And when there's already been concerns raised that were really important to add, in my opinion, and consider, so, there's never an extension of thirty days or something like that for, um, slowing things down and making sure that we're doing things in a way that's thoughtful?
So, the, oh, go ahead, Sherlin, I'm sorry.
The tax, the, the development that has happened in the southwest concept plan area goes on the tax rules October first. So, if it's, if the district is not formed essentially by September first, that will not be captured. The ta, the tax rules that go, that go into the tax rules October first will not be captured in the district. And that builds the base that gets your maximum indebtedness to fifty-three million. So, it drastically changes the calcu, the financial calculations if you, if, if this is not formed by September first.
And then, can you a, answer the other question, which is why it wasn't included? Like, we don't own this, so why would we be doing this? Is it part of our city? Or is it county property?
Well, what I understood from the county on Tuesday, as I sat in front of them, was that it, the extension is included in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan that was adopted in February of two thousand nineteen by the Toaletan City Council. And they have, they, they are trying to get federal money to, uh, for the financing plan for the extension. It's a tens of millions of dollars worth of project. I don't know the exact number. Um, they've secured ten million dollars worth of money for it and are going after packages to, um, get the rest of it. And they need, according to them on Tuesday, they need Toaletan, the, all the partners' support, um, and even a minimal amount of sup, of financial support. Um, uh, Wilsonville had, um, had contributed five hundred thousand and they suggested that that would be an appropriate match to show Toaletan's, uh, the partners' support and as they go after financing packages with, for the federal government.
So, and tha, and then I'll just follow up with that. I mean, I know that federal financing, part of the things that are, um, frowned upon are increased congestion and environmental impacts. Some would argue that we have not had a thorough, um, consideration of, um, options for, how would I say this? In, as far as goals for the Clean Water Act, as far as preventing, uh, building over wetlands and doing, um, considerations of, for instance, Day Road for alternatives. So, you know, ooh, um, anyway, so, to me, it's to say, I just think there's a certain responsibility we have as, in this, in, in certain times, where we, we are supposed to be taking responsibility for making sure that we're, um, we're, we're raising concerns around the barriers for federal money, which is congestion, environmental impacts and other things. But those are two of the main firsts on the list. So, and we know, I mean, we live here. We, we know that bringing additional freight traffic, I, I don't understand how it's supposed to work at all if there's nowhere to go. You're gonna take a right-hand turn onto a traffic jam, um, nearby our schools. I don't know how our kids get to school. I just don't understand it. So, I'm having a big problem. I just wanna say. And, and the, the answers just don't make sense in a certain kind of way. And then, you know, I was ready to go at a certain level, but then we add this on top of it. And without, you know, to be fair, I, I love the fact that, um, we created committees and that we had public involvement, but we don't have the Land Use Commission even discussing it as part of the projects, even though we can squeeze it in there. But to me, it's not the way we normally do things here in the city and not our culture. It might be the culture of the, I don't know if it's the county's culture or not to, but I've heard a lot from county constituents as well as city constituents around their concerns around this. It's, and it's not like I'm hearing about it because I'm asking for it. I go for a walk and run into someone who tells me, oh, it's great that you finally got a, you know, that they stopped, um, that they were able to get the environmental study done, but we're really concerned that the environmental study is being conducted by ODOT. I don't ask for that conversation. Or someone else says to me, whoa, this government overreach, it reminds me of the Huey Pete Long Bridges that go through people's backyards. I have to look up who that guy is, you know? And I don't wanna have that kind of reputation around decision-making in our city. So, I just wanna be really clear. I'm not, you know, I know I have a certain perspective and I've, I'm share it pretty, you know, but I'm not even going out that much. And people are coming to me with their concerns. And so, I'm very concerned right now. That's all I'll say. Thanks. But I don't want to say that, you know, I appreciate your work, Jonathan and Sherlin and, and Kim and Aquila's long work. Um, it's a hard problem to solve and it's more complicated than a lot of people understand.
Uh, Council President Graham.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's input. I think I've heard a lot of interesting and very heartfelt comments. And I appreciate people's perspectives and point of view. I too know that traffic is very difficult. I live on the east side of the city and between Borland Road and Sixty-Fifth. Yes, traffic is an extreme challenge. And part of that challenge is the lack of east-west connectivity that we have as a community. But first, I'd like to kind of remind everybody, if we could just go backwards a little bit, to two thousand and nineteen. We were first talking about or reviewing the Basalt Creek Plan. Prior to the council at that time, which was just two years ago, it seems like forever, but it was just two years ago. We had a lot of community input, community testimony. We had special committees set up to give us input on that. So, and at that time, the, uh, Basalt Creek Parkway, which includes the bridge extension, you know, that was all part of the plan and that was all part of the discussion. There was a lot of, you know, opinions about that bridge, the exact placement, that pitch, the, um, the rise and run of the bridge, um, what it would look like, how it would meet up with Boons Ferry, what that intersection would look like. I remember an enormous amount of conversations. And I remember, um, Councilor Joelle Davis and all of her input about, uh, that connectivity in that bridge. But the point of that, me bringing this up, is, is that with community input, with community involvement, we did approve the Basalt Creek Plan. And based on that, um, you know, our part, our partner, Washington County, went ahead with, um, preliminary planning for that causeway, parkway, whatever we'll call it, and the accompanying bridge. And so, where we find ourselves now is that those things are moving ahead based on the Basalt Creek Plan. And what sort of weighs in the balance, when I look at this, is our urban renewal district. And for me, that urban renewal district is sort of the key to help unlocking the resources that we, as a council, need to really start addressing a lot of the concerns that we're hearing from the community. That urban renewal district and those funds give us opportunities to look more closely at traffic, set some, um, funding aside to maybe use some creative traffic mitigation. It gives us funding that we can set aside to look at environmental opportunities, to look at connectivity between some of the built communities we have and the natural resources that we have at the canyon. You know, we can look at setting aside land for a park if we have the funding. We can set aside land for some mini urban forests, um, with the tree cover and canopy that we have in that area. It just gives us so much ability to do special things to make this project really start to meet the needs and the concerns of a lot of people in the community. And one thing that I think that we're missing in the discussion about the Basalt Creek Parkway is also the fact that it would be one of the largest east-west connectivity pieces of- of our traffic plan in our entire city. And it could help take some of the pressure off Twalton Sherwood, which is also a huge pressure point if you look at traffic trying to get around the city. Um, you know, having a second east-west egress could be enormously helpful in that particular area. And then, you know, as I believe Jonathan mentioned, you know, Wilsonville is also taking a look at some serious interchange, um, improvements and upgrades a little bit further south from us. Um, I don't think that anybody thinks that we don't have a problem with traffic on Boon's Ferry, because I've been stuck trying to drop kids off at high school. Believe me, I know, I know what that's like. And I know what Sixty-Fifth looks like in the afternoons, in the mornings, and what Borland Road looks like in the afternoons, in the mornings, in the evenings, and you name it. Um, but I don't think that less connectivity is really the answer to our traffic issues. I think more connectivity is part of the answer. And I think being able to have funding so that we can partner with local entities to look for different mitigation strategies is something that is absolutely crucial. I cannot imagine this area developing without us having the, the urban renewal district, the funds that we're accruing to be able to do some very special and wonderful things down there. And, um, I would just really say that, you know, we worked very hard. And by two thousand and nineteen, when we made the acceptance of the plan at that time, I mean, we had taken a lot of these things into consideration. And I know it maybe feels like all of a sudden this has popped out of nowhere in August, just last week, but, you know, plans were made and, uh, promises given and contracts arranged based on, you know, things from two years prior. So, it has been bubbling up. It has been there. Um, the county could have probably reintroduced it in a little better way. But, um, thank you. That was what I wanted to say about the, it being part of the plan and it, and being there for such a long amount of time and how incredibly crucial, I think, our urban renewal district is. Crucial. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Sacco. And then Councillor Pratt.
Thank you. Um, so, while I personally do not support the, um, the action of building this bridge over a canyon, um, I do however recognize that as a governing body, that this was agreed upon. Um, and that decision was made prior to my time on council. Um, and so while I don't particularly feel that it aligns with my values, that's not, I kind of feel like that ship has sailed as these conversations are developing. And the conversation in front of us isn't if this bridge is going to be built, it's if we include it in this district. And, but what is really weighing on my conscience is if we don't support adding the extension, we don't, we lose some valuable funding for things like affordable housing. And that's what I can't, that's what I feel like I can control right now. And that really weighs heavy upon me, uh, because affordable housing is something that, that we, that not only our city, but our county, our entire, the entire Portland area really needs right now. Um, and I think that supports, um, a lot of our DEI initiatives as well as a council, and making sure that we do have affordable housing for, um, you know, for the people that really need it. And as we look at property values, we can see them continue to rise. And, um, I think that's something that we really need to consider for this conversation. Um, and it'll also impact, you know, some other important funding, um, such as water, sewer, trail development, which is really important to me personally. Um, and another concern, which Nancy kind of alluded to that I have, is that, you know, we're, we are not gonna be on this council forever. And again, it seems clear to me that this bridge is gonna happen. If it's not today, it's going to be down the road. And I also have to consider, um, that there are people smarter than me who have looked at different areas on where to build, um, maybe not a bridge, but more connectivity. I am not a transportation expert. Um, and I have to consider that, again, there's people who do this for a living, who have decided that although, again, I personally don't like the idea of building a bridge over this canyon, that, um, this was the, the decision that these people who do this for a living have decided. Um, and I guess going back to saying that we're not gonna be here forever, um, having, becoming a partner with Washington County on this project, and again, possibly building in some room for additional studies. And the people here on this council now who are passionate about the envi- passionate about the environment, we can make this project more aligned to our values. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future. We don't know if the next council, the next people who are elected will have those same values. And, um, or if we don't provide any funding, will Twalton even have a say in some of those, um, environmental things down the road? So, those are some of the things that I've been, um, losing sleep over, over the past, um, few days, as I'm sure everybody else has been as well. Um, and I'd also like to say, if you do decide to write a letter in support, um, of the extension, I would also, um, I would also like the council to consider, um, asking the county to, um, to make sure that we do have a seat for these environmental concerns. And if we come to them as a partner, um, and, and sort of get, you know, give a little, take a little. What can we do if we do, um, include this in, in the district and we do support with a letter? What can we ask for, you know, so our needs are met too? Granted, not in maybe the way that we see in, in the perfect world, but how can we be a good partner to get some of the things we want as well? Um, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councillor Pratt, you had your hand up?
Oh, boy. Um, well, first of all, um, my first question was, um, when we were talking about this October first date, um, are we just losing the tax increment from that PGE property for the most part, which is a big property, but is, we still have other areas, right? It's just what's been developed at this point? I'd wanna understand that first of all.
So, yes, and there's also three additional developments that have occurred near the PGG site, including the Amazon facility, as well as, I cannot remember, but it's to the north near Mycelium.
Okay. Then my second question is, um, um, you know, Councillor Grimes talked about all these things we could do with this money, but isn't this money just going to the projects that have been identified?
So, great question. Um, the project list that you see tonight is not a finite project list, nor is the funding that is associated with it tonight a finite, um, dedication. So, in reality, and I'm gonna lay it out as, as very simplistic as possible, on October first, if the plan is adopted, the Twalton Development Commission can add and remove any project they wish, or add or remove funding as they wish by simple resolution. The difference between what you're seeing tonight and the Leventon tax increment financing that you'll be seeing later is within that particular plan, there was a built-in provision that any additional change over five hundred thousand was a substantial amendment. We're not including that in this plan document. So, needs change, as Councillor Sacco had pointed out, the Leventon tax increment plan was amended eleven times over its course of its, uh, plan. So, they've added about thirteen projects. They expanded the district several times. I mean, it's really a foundation for this council, as both the council and Twalton Development Commission, to really direct, as, uh, Council President Grimes said, to what the needs may be tomorrow, five years, and ten years. And it's important to note that tax increment financing, you're not gonna have any money for the first ten years to do anything with us in general. So, there may be a lot of changes that occur between now and twenty-third.
Okay. And then my next question is, um, with the current project list, I, I would just like, um, well, it was brought up affordable housing. I know we have the CEPA project. I'm not sure if that other development's really affordable housing, but how would that affect the housing that's scheduled to go into that area if we don't have the urban renewal district?
So, one of the projects that are listed that is directly gonna benefit CEPA is the water system upsizing that they desperately need. During the task force, um, meeting that we had in meeting two, and Councillor Sacco can attest to this, we originally did not include the CEPA parcel, just it was an oversight on staff. And so, as we went through that process, community partners identified that their parcel wasn't included, and they specifically requested that while there wasn't a direct project directly tied to their particular parcel, that they knew that any kind of development, whether that's road extension or water sewer, uh, stormwater infrastructure updates, that if they're included, they can tap into those potential taxes and funds. So, indirectly, the water system upsizing will directly affect CEPA. But if we don't have that ability to do that, they will have to take on the burden of finding that additional financing in order to provide the needed water sewer that, uh, is required for that development.
And do you have an estimate of that costing, rough, rough?
Are, are we talking about that particular project for CEPA?
Just to make the CEPA project viable.
So, they're still in the financing, uh, modeling stage. So,
Okay.
It'll be up to them.
But that's something, we could use that six million we got help with from the federal government?
Yes.
Potentially, potentially. Okay. Um, I guess, um, this Basalt Creek thing, well, I'm just gonna call out what nobody's saying here is that, um, I understand this was in the plans, but I also understand, just like that, um, you know, plans can be changed. And that's what happened with, you know, that connection from I-5 to Ninety-Nine, when nobody wanted a road going through our park. You know, these things are not, um, just, I, I know there's plans and money and all this that went into it, but, you know, the county heard that we didn't want this. And instead of talking to us, things just didn't happen in the right way. And I've watched those county commission meetings, Washington County Commission meetings. I know those people on that commission. They, you know, they, they are concerned about the environment. They're concerned about protection, uh, uh, sorry, the transportation issues in our county and the livability in our county. So, I, I'm failing to see why we couldn't have had a discussion before that, but that didn't happen. Um, this Basalt Creek thing, um, there were many different plans for this. I don't know how this one was decided on, but I don't think it was because, I think it, there was a lot of complexity in how this decision was made. I don't think it was necessarily the best route. It was a compromised decision. And the, um, the costs, I, I mean, I cannot, in my mind, I cannot twenty years from now go down that road and see this extension that's adding traffic that, that they're gonna have to, I don't know how you break up the salt to put footage for a bridge, but they're gonna destroy that wetland and that ravine. We're gonna have, um, if this goes all the way through, we're gonna have, um, truck traffic going right next to where this affordable housing is. And it, so we're not meeting so many of our goals of equity, livability. Um, we're not listening to our people. I mean, I think, I honestly think we need to also take a step back and just look at fixing the problems we have now and maybe slow this down. So, we're dealing with the traffic we have now. We're waiting for that, um, freeway at the north Wilsonville to be fixed and then move ahead, just like, um, Mr. Boss said. I, I, I really think we need to take a step back and think about this, because, um, if, if we're creating, if we're taking, doing a compromise now that's gonna make this, um, ruin our environment and the livability and our road or transportation system's gonna be a mess in twenty years, that's not something I wanna say I supported.
Right. Council President Grimes.
Thank you, Councillor Pratt and Councillor Sacco. Um, I appreciate what you guys said very much. And I can hear, Councillor Pratt, in your voice, how difficult this is. And I think we all feel like that. I mean, this is one of those complex, difficult, you know, my heart, my head, my, yeah, is all over the place on this. But I'm afraid, and, I mean, Sherilyn, um, Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, please. But at this point, based on the decisions and the, that were made in two thousand and nineteen, what my understanding is, and I think you guys are in the same boat with me, is that Washington County is building Basalt Creek with the bridge, period. Us waiting for a month, um, to do additional discussion or additional work sessions is not going to change that. It is going to be built by Washington County. Um, we will be asked to, um, pitch in money for it. And it is out, to some degree at this point, it is out of our control. It is going to be built. And what is at stake in that process is our ability to create this urban renewal district and create the funding that we need to make Basalt Creek area kind of what we envisioned when we were doing the planning. Um, I can't imagine trying to do any type of development in that area if we don't have an urban renewal district to help us pay for the infrastructure. I can't imagine trying to do updates and upgrades and implement infrastructure on a case-by-case basis based on TDCs that developers pay to us as projects come to fruition. Kind of a hit and miss here and there without giving us an opportunity to do a cohesive, cost-effective, connected, well-thought-out plan. And it, honestly, that just terrifies me, um, to think that we could find ourselves in that position. Um, you know, I have concerns, like everyone else does, about the traffic and about the pollution and about the canyon. And I just feel that, unless I'm wrong, these are being built regardless of whether we take a month to talk about it, or six months, or a week to talk about it. It's gonna happen. And what we need to realize is what's at stake, if we destroy our relationship with Washington County, um, over this particular issue, is that all the opportunities for the urban renewal district will disappear. We will not have an opportunity to have that. And without that, we can't do things that would make this project more beneficial to the community. We can't work on special traffic. We can't work on environmental pieces. We can't do parks. We can't do trails. We can't work on connectivity issues. We won't have the funds. We won't have the means to do any of that, let alone build out the infrastructure in a cohesive, thoughtful way to support the development that's gonna be happening out there. And, you know, I, I, it's a difficult position to be in, and I feel terrible in a lot of ways for certain things that go along with that project. But I kind of feel that here is where we are. And I think the best thing that we can do as a council is be able to set aside a very significant amount of money to really start to take care of our community and build that area out to meet the aspirations of the people that worked on the committees and all of the people that gave us input for that area. So, again, if, if actually if I'm wrong in there somewhere, Jonathan or Sherilyn or Steve, jump in and correct for me. But thank you guys for hearing me out.
Councillor Hillier.
Thank you. Um, so, in listening to my fellow councillors and to our community, um, I think all my questions and all my, my speech that I kind of have been making in my head in the middle of the night while I'm not sleeping about, um, this topic. Um, and, and I guess I boiled down to, my real concern is if we do not put ourselves as a city in a position to be seen as a valued partner or a trusted partner, are we gonna have the seat at the table for the environmental issues? Are we gonna have the seat at the table for a variety of the other things? for a variety of the other things that, that we wanna impact in our community and especially the traffic? There are people here that I respect deeply, sharing their opinion. And, and I'm just concerned that we are not gonna really truly be heard if we are not seen and, and, and I guess you could say, am I more concerned about what Washington County thinks about us than what our residents think of us? And that's probably a fair question to ask then of, of how I feel about this. But I really truly, in my heart of hearts, believe that we will be cutting off our nose to spite our face for our residents in the long run if we do not move forward as planned by the two thousand and nineteen council and that commitment in order to be seen as good partners, so that we can do kind of what politics used to look like. You know, you give a little, you take a little, a, and people end up not getting everything they want. And so, um, I guess, I guess that's just kind of where I'm coming from.
I see, uh, Council Reyes has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I too share the same feeling that we need to have a voice at the table through this process. And I feel like if we, if we lose that opportunity, uh, like one of my council members, uh, federal councilors said, it will happen. We can't stop it. But, um, I would rather be part of that conversation. I'd rather, I'd rather negotiate. And yes, we will have to compromise. And yes, I have not been able to sleep and we have been, I've been a little stressed out over this. But we have to, I guess, I, it took me a while to accept that this is gonna happen and that we have to have a voice. And I wanna have a voice. I don't wanna, I don't want the, this project to start or move forward, whether it's five, ten, fifteen years, and for our city to be left without a voice. And a voice is very important. Thank you.
Council Pratt.
I just wanna say too, I, I mean, I really appreciate your perspective too. And I think we're all, um, even though we have very different opinions today, I think we all are trying to do what's right for our city in the long run. But, um, two things I just wanna point out, like with our parks, we've already given up nineteen million dollars in this area for parks. And the second thing is that, um, I'm hearing an assumption here that if we, um, agree with the county on this, then we're gonna have some seat at the table. And, um, I don't know that we can assume that that's guaranteed. Maybe there's a better opportunity for that, but, um, we don't know what the future holds.
Council Brooks.
I too appreciate the conversation and the thoughtfulness. And I know that, um, I've had trouble sleeping too. And, um, this isn't one of the ones that we're just kind of phoning in, right? It's really concerning. I, um, still, um, I, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the work around the, the traffic plan. I appreciate the constrictions that we have, but I also appreciate the public input and comments. And I wanna say that as far as being trusted partners, this is where I feel very differently than some of the other counselors. I think we've done our due diligence of coming to the table and sharing our concerns. And some of the concerns that we've had about the bridge and alignment, for instance, there was workarounds. You know, there was trying to get an environmental exclusion. That was not done by us. There was, um, the trickling in of the information from the traffic studies. That is not like, we don't have that answer yet. And then we're gonna put this in that's not even our property. I don't get that. We get this last gotcha tactic in the middle of honest, um, collaborative work together. And that is not something that our city has done. And also, when somebody does something like that, I also don't think it's rewardable to say, oh, well, we're gonna have a stronger voice at the table because this, this kind of stuff is just fine to do. Just add, um, things onto the list like this. And then as far as the alternative studies for location, I don't believe that it was diligent. So I understand what, that we have expertise, like one of our counselors said. Um, and I do understand that there's engineers and things working on things. But I also understand that there's, that a lot of the, the results that we've gotten has been because we've brought up our concerns. And when we bring up our concerns, all of a sudden, it's like, there was a punitive nature about it. And I'm, I cannot stop, um, bringing up community concerns when they come to me. And I don't think that it's, I don't serve the county. I do serve my constituents. And I hear what people say about taking off and putting on projects. I don't see why we have to keep this project on right now. I don't think it's proper. And I can't vote for this if it's on. It's just how it is. So it's unfortunate. I don't wanna be in the position. I want to, you know, be as supportive as I was before this county meeting about trying to make solutions for all the issues, for the traffic issues, for the safety issues, for the housing issues, for our development issues. And I feel that I've been put in a bad situation. And it's not because of a prior agreement. It's because of the current situation. And so I don't think that that's even an accurate thing to say. And I don't think that it, it is a done deal, um, whether people think so or not, because there's too many problems that still exist with the project, with the alignment and with the reality of that actually working. Also, just the cost. And I also don't understand why we would take, you know, it's a very complicated area. I still don't understand, like, why are we paying for county, um, property? Or is this annexed in? Then do we have additional responsibility for managing the water there and the storm drainage and the rest of it? Because you're not just talking about the bridge. You're talking about the whole area, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't feel comfortable with that. And it's not just a little project. It's a really complicated piece of topography there. And I'm not gonna pretend like that's not happening, um, because other people told me this is a great idea and I should trust everybody that hasn't necessarily done things in this moment that feel completely trustworthy to me. Or, you know, in a lot of ways. And I'm gonna leave it there. I mean, I have other pages of concerns that I have not even touched on tonight. Um, but there are many concerns. And even if this goes forward, those concerns are not gonna go away. And our constituents are not going away. Anyway, that's all.
Look at brother hands up. All right, um, I guess it's my turn. So as we alluded to, I'm gonna be just straight, honest. I do not appreciate what Washington County Commissioner's situation has put us into. This is not good partners. This came out of nowhere. We've had discussions with county commissioners about the bridge for years. And to give us, basically my mind, an ultimatum, you know, to our city staff last week, pushed us against a wall on something, as Council Brooks has said, you know, I had no heartache approving. But with the bridge in there, you know, it does make me pause to think, you know, you know, what's the spirit of partnership with the county that we can look forward to in the future? And that's where I go to that letter that they're asking for also, is we very, be very specific on those things. Other than we, it's not, that's not in the letter yet, that I think Council Sacco brought up to add that we'll enforce this partnership. If we're, if we're going to, if we're to concede this to the county as part of our renewal zone, I want way more than what we have in that letter right now. I want firm commitments from the county on what they're gonna do. And to Council Brooks's points, how they're gonna, you know, further refine, further refine the bridge. I know the design's not done yet, but how can they further refine, refine that, that plan based on what our constituents say, so that we can find a, a plan, maybe it's not gonna be the perfect one for that bridge, at least it's one we can live with, that addresses the concerns of our community. I also have concerns with if we take this out of the plan, um, we pretty much have been told back channel that the county will not approve this urban renewal zone. You know, we've been talking about another urban renewal zone in downtown Twalton. That's not gonna happen. If we tank this one, you think the county's gonna approve another one? There's no way. So all the grand plans we have for the other urban renewal zone to revitalize our downtown probably is not gonna happen because the county won't approve that either, because they're still gonna want that bridge included somewhere else. They're not gonna give up on the bridge. The county commissioners have told me they're not gonna give up on the bridge. Uh, so it's put us in a really crappy position tonight of, you know, how do we move forward on this? So one of the questions I have is about, um, going to like, uh, what Dan Boss was talking about, you know, with traffic as it is today, and this study being done so, done so long ago, that we do have the ability to add new projects to the urban renewal zone. But what does your average traffic study cost? Where would that money come from? Who loses money in that deal? Do we have to reshuffle money? And then if we do get, you know, a study back, who pays for the improvements we're gonna need? That's, uh, some of the things in my head. I, I understand it's ten years from now that before we'll have any money, uh, even to give the county. And as what I'm been told is for Council Brooks, that five hundred thousand dollars is basically a matching grant, if you will, or a matching funds. It doesn't give us ownership of the bridge. It just shows that we have some skin in the game financially. Uh, they, they're gonna pay for the rest of it, but they just want, you know, some money from us, uh, as skin in the game. So I've heard loud and clear today about traffic concerns on Boons Ferry Road. So to me, that's the biggest thing we're gonna have to deal with right out of the gate. If this gets approved, that how we factor in a, a new traffic study or, you know, fixing the problems we have today, knowing what's coming in the future. One of the problems we've had in Twalton is we've grown so fast over this last twenty years, where we have not kept up in infrastructure. And now we're paying the price, our residents are paying the price, not keeping up with our growth. And so how do we fix this? As Dan mentioned, do we widen Boons Ferry Road? It'll probably fill up, but what are we gonna do? That's where it comes into a series of routes that can alleviate congestion, uh, throughout the region. So we can disperse the east-west, north-south traffic, so it's not solely focused on Boons Ferry Road. You know, in a discussion I had with, with, uh, Council, sorry, Commissioner Rogers, he brought up an old idea of Southwest eighty-fourth. Uh, if you're not familiar with that, it's a very end and inward road next to I five. It's kind of like a service road next to I five. Could we do something with that to alleviate pressure on Boons Ferry Road? Uh, because it's just sitting there basically not used that much at all. And is there something we could somehow loop it into our transportation system to take that pressure off Boons Ferry Road? They have two routes. They're going now, north-south along I five. So it just, long story short, the county has super frustrated me with the position they put us all in tonight, uh, that we thought we had one plan. And then, as was mentioned Friday, it changed. And so it puts us in a very difficult position of having to vote on something we know can do good things in the future. Uh, give us the money to help CIPA get built. Give us the money to build the infrastructure there. I don't wanna delay this because to lose that kind of tack, you know, that tax assessment, I mean, to me, you know, pretty much collapses the whole reason to have the urban renewal zone because of some of the biggest projects can't get done. So it just put us in a very crappy position tonight, uh, that we had to make a very difficult decision on how to proceed on something we're all not wild about, but, uh, maybe we can agree upon moving forward on and seriously tweaking in the years to come or months to come to make sure it is something we can live with and be proud of. Other, any other comments? All right, so, um, are we, are we talking about the letter after this? Well, I guess, well, of course, because there's no reason for a letter. This doesn't, uh, get, uh, the motions or the votes to, uh, advance the ordinance. So the question for tonight is, okay, given the discussions from the community and from the counselors, do we want to advance ordinance number fourteen fifty-eight dash twenty-one with the amendments presented by staff tonight to our August twenty-third meeting for consideration and adoption by council? That's the question to my fellow counselors.
I say yes.
Okay, so do you wanna make a motion?
I move.
Would be, this, uh, I, the sample rhetoric I have is I move to advance ordinance number fourteen fifty-eight dash twenty-one with the amendments presented by staff this evening to the August twenty-third, twenty-twelve city council meeting for consideration and adoption by council.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I shouldn't laugh. This is very painful. It's not funny. It's, it's very difficult. But I do think that we should move forward with the ordinance, with the staff amendments. And I think we should move it forward to the August twenty-third because I think that the urban renewal district hanging in the balance is too, too great a cost.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have, okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, to advance the ordinance fourteen fifty-eight, fourteen fifty-eight dash twenty-one. Any discussion on the motions? All right, seeing none, I'll take roll. So pictures moved around. Uh, Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
No.
Council Brooks.
I cannot move forward with the amendments, no.
Council Hillier.
Reluctantly, yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Uh, Council President Brines.
Yes.
I also vote reluctantly yes and look forward to much more increased, greater, whatever you want, way better partnership with the county on going forward, both on addressing the traffic issues, getting traffic studies done, getting a design down there that will work today and in the future, uh, for traffic. Because we, we heard it loud and clear about traffic down there, and it has to be addressed. So at our first Twalton Development Commission, I know one of the first things I'm gonna ask is to change that plan to have a traffic study in there along with working with Washington County and finding financing to get these fixes done before the traffic does come with the growth we're anticipating in this area. All right, so now that wraps that one up. Now we have another one, another public area. Let me change over here.
Well, um,
Oh, with the letter, right, yeah.
A letter. I, you've already given some feedback. Um, they need it in their pocket this week. So, um, if, whatever else you wanna try to craft into there.
I think, Council Sacco, you had a couple of good sentences there that you were looking forward to having in the letter.
Um, I can't remember what I said. Um, but, um, just that, you know, we have, I don't know how it belongs in this letter. I'm looking at it right now, but something to the effect that, you know, we, uh, we support the Southwest, the Salt Creek Parkway extension, um, but would like to have, um, you know, a seat at the table. And somebody wordsmithed it, that's better than, uh, could say it more eloquently than me, but to have a seat at the, at the table to address our concerns along the way. And, um, you know, that we want to be a good partner, um, but, uh, we also want to have a voice, um, for these concerns. And I don't know if we wanna list out concerns, um, specific concerns, but I know one of them is definitely environmental concerns. And, um, you know, we want, and traffic study concerns. Um, so I don't, I guess I could start by writing. So I don't, I guess I could start by writing something up and sending it to, no, you got it, Sherilyn, you're making notes? Okay.
So the one amendment I would make to your suggestion is not, we would like, we demand. I want, I want, I want a very forceful, if they're going to play games with us, I'm going to play games with them.
And I'd like to see the word and. I'm sorry, mayor, and I'd like to see the word and used, not but.
I, I hear your concern. They have to vote on this on August 17th and, um, I they were not in the mood for us demanding. I, I, so I, I think we put, I, I, I think we put in I, I, we can craft, um. We have environmental concerns, we have traffic concerns and we will be at the table. We will be, I, I, we can craft all of those, those things, um. But I hesitate to put the word demand in there because I don't, they've got a, they've got a vote on it on the 17th.
My take on it, again, this is me being very candid. If they vote not to support this urban renewal zone, then they have to answer for it. And they will answer for it.
I agree.
This is something for the economic benefit of the region and for Walton. If they're serious about urban renewal, they're not going to get hung up around the word demand. And if they do, then they're going to have to tube it and they're going to have to answer for it.
Can I say something? I just want to say that, um, that, um, that I, I want to kind of reiterate that you know, I think we've just done a lot of work to get, these goals were county goals. These workforce goals, housing goals, they were goals that are impressed on us, that we did a lot of work. And then to say, uh, you know, um, this additional thing, and if it doesn't happen, we're not going to approve it. To me, it just, it doesn't even like I, I, I'm going to say like Dancing with the 800 Pound Gorilla, that's fine, but they're not. There's a court system, there's developers, there's other people that there's consequences around, so I feel very comfortable about doing our due diligence and I am not interested in providing political cover for doing something that has so many problems with it. And I just, for my list for the letter, I, I find it baloney. And so I just don't buy it. Um, so I'm with the mayor on that. My lists, my six major concerns are congestion, cost, this, there. The other thing, it's not a bridge, it's a connection because if, if it really keeps getting looked at, there's so many problems with it. So I have a hard time calling it a bridge because I, I do think that alignments can change. And I understand that they want a bridge, but I still, there's congestion, there's cost, huge costs. Environmental impacts, and when it gets built, it's not going to be unbuilt, it's going to be destroyed over there. So, I mean, we can talk about mitigation. Functionality and alignment, one of the problems too was, just like what somebody had said, the original plan, this is such a Plan B. The original plan didn't have buy-in from Clackamas. Does Clackamas even know this is going on? Um, safety is another big concern, not just for our school, you know, kids at schools. They want to put bike lanes on truck traffic. I don't understand that bridge. But also for the truck drivers themselves making hard right turns on narrow, on the narrowest part of that of that road and pollution. And then government overreach. So those are my six. Congestion, cost, environmental impacts, functionality alignment, safety and government overreach. And safety includes not only pedestrian drivers, but also this extra carcinogens in the air from truck pollution that's going to be running right, this isn't, this is historical neighborhoods running through backyards of houses that have been there for a very long time. It's ridiculous.
If you want to substitute for, or Sherilyn for demand, but I just don't want a word, the word like. So you, you talk to your folks, but it's not like, it's, it's firmly request, demand, whatever word you want to use. Because I'll tell Chair Herring straight out, you know, and Commissioner Rogers why that word is in there. I'll take the heat for it. But, I mean, if they're, if they're supposed to support our city and support our region and its economic growth and transportation, if they get hung up about us asking for a few more things, give me a break.
I hear everybody's frustration and, I mean, I think I'm afflicted with angst in this whole process. But I do want to put a word in there for the way that we communicate with the county. I, I feel like we need to set the tone for constructive, collaborative conversation. And I know we have hard feelings and I know there's a lot of frustration and after last week, I'm sure there's a lot of really wanting to sort of feel like we need to strike back to some degree, but I just, we are such a good council, we treat each other with respect, we collaborate, we listen. I just want to kind of take the high road with the county to some degree and sort of model back to them the way that we would like to work with them. I do not want to enter into a contentious relationship with them that is negative and combative anymore than we absolutely have to. Three quarters of our city is in Washington County. What's not in, you know, the city is, is every area we're talking about developing is being bordered by unincorporated Washington County. You know, to poison that well, I mean, that could have significantly long lasting catastrophic consequences that would be so detrimental to our citizens in our community. And I, I just you know, at some point I want to be somewhat pragmatic about this and I want to really try to move forward with them in a constructive fashion and not answer, you know, fire with fire. If, if we can do that, I mean, I feel strongly, I have strong feelings, but I, I really want to sort of try to respond to them in a way that, again, models the way that I want our working relationship with them to be strong. Be heard, but constructively respectful in the way that we communicate. Because I just, blowing that up, that relationship up, oh my goodness, that would just be so devastating for us long-term, even short-term, so. My two cents.
Valid, valid points. Councillor Pratt.
Hard to do.
Yeah, to what councillor Grimes said and, and what's been discussed and, um, this is just my opinion, but I feel like, um, we've been bullied and in my experience, um, you have to be strong and face up and be direct with a bully. So I think there's, uh, um, I get what you're saying Nancy, and I think we need to be polite in the way we say it, but it's got to also be worded in a way that we're not backing down or looking like we're going, because we have to be careful, we're not setting ourselves up to just have this continually go on and while we still want to maintain this relationship with them and it's a, it's a real fine line there, but I think we also have to be very strong in what we're saying here.
So there's specific requests of us, of you, was to have a letter of support to, um, get federal funding. And, I mean, that, that, that we go hand in hand or we, we provide a letter of support when they go for federal funding. So I, I think that we can craft a letter that does that. And a tangible, a tangible representation of that is it's in the, it's in the plan, 500,000. And assuming that you, you approve it, and then we list concerns and that these must be addressed through this process. This is a long-term process, it's not going to happen overnight. We're not completely through design. I, I don't know exactly where it is. It's somewhere between 50 and 85% design. So there's room for them to hear our concerns and your constituents' concerns and to adjust. I don't know that the location's going to adjust. You may be more optimistic than I, than I am about that. But I do believe that our, your concerns, that you're addressing, that you're vocalizing are valid. And so I think I'm optimistic that we can craft a letter that captures that. And I would also request that on August 17th, one of you come to the board meeting and be present to, to talk about this.
What time is it at?
Um, I don't know, I can get you that information.
If you could send it to all of us, please.
Yep.
Is the county still doing Zoom when you have to go out to Hillsborough?
Yes, it's all through virtual.
Actually, they're doing Teams, right? They're doing something.
I think it's Zoom. It was Zoom on Tuesday.
So I'm sure you don't have to drive out to Hillsborough, makes it easier.
Yep.
So with that question, um, are folks comfortable with Sherilyn tweaking the letter she has in the packet a bit? And getting it out to commissioners prior to the, uh, meeting they got coming up?
I'm just being on the record that I am not, I'm opposed to supporting the letter. And I'm opposed to supporting the local, I'm opposed to this whole way of being dealt with, actually. Thanks.
Alright, so I'll just do a, I'll do a quick roll call here. Uh, councillor Sacco, what's your vote on the letter?
Aye.
Okay, councillor Pratt.
No.
Councillor Brooks.
No.
Councillor Hillier.
Aye.
Uh, councillor Reyes.
Um, I'm sorry, my, my. Can you hear?
Say again?
Can you hear me? I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you broke up there. Now we can hear you.
I missed for a little bit. Sorry, I'm in an area where I have no reception, a little bit of reception and I missed.
So I'll go to councillor President, I'm going to, I'm going to councillor President Grimes. For her vote, I'll come to you, uh, councillor Reyes.
Yes, I feel we need to, um, and, oh. Maria?
Yes, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, yes. Um, what I would like in the letter, I, I definitely want to be, I don't know if I, it's, it's because that's something that I was trying to connect, we were talking about what we wanted in a letter, my expectations. Is that still correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my, I would like to see in that letters more, I did, I do agree with, um, the mayor when he said to be more assertive and not to be like, we're not going to just, uh, accept everything. But we are going to be assertive and we are going to, uh, look at everything. So I, I, I want to use more like the action is I want to be there or we want to be there or we will be there. So I like those action words or things that I'm already seeing myself in that project. So that's, I, and I would like to hear all the, uh, I think councillor Brooks was, um, uh, putting a list of the concerns, the environment, the traffic, uh, all those concerns that she highlighted when I was listening to her, I thought they were valid. So I, I would like to see those, those concerns as well.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I'm trying my best. I mean, uh,
That sounds like, it sounds like you're a yes.
Area, but I try to find it.
It sounds like you're a yes and you, you've had the same feedback you've given Sherilyn, so that's good.
Okay, yes.
Alright, councillor President Grimes, I think you said yes.
Yeah, and I, and I, I, yeah, and I approve of the, the concerns and adding language strongly, respectfully, strongly about being at the table and having our concerns heard in a respectful, constructive way. So yes.
Alright. Alright, so you, you have what you need, Sherilyn, for the letter?
Yes, sir.
Alright, alright. So now we move on to, that's everything with Salt Creek, correct? Alright.
Please don't let there be more.
Yeah, alright, so now we have a public hearing for the Leviton Urban Renewal. Um, so this is a public hearing under ORS 457 dot 120. The city council consider a substantial amendment to the Leviton Tax Increment District and associated Leviton Tax Increment Plan. The criteria for making a substantial amendment to the urban renewal plan are contained in ORS 457 dot 085 through ORS 457 dot 095 and other applicable provisions in ORS Chapter 457. Tonight, the hearing will be conducted as follows. First, city staff will make a presentation. Then we'll hear, uh, from members of the public who should testify in favor of the substantial amendment. Followed by those folks who are against the, the, uh, substantial amendment. Then we'll have, uh, we'll conclude this public testimony. Councillors, then we'll ask questions to city staff and can ask those folks who testified questions. And after the, uh, questions have been all answered, the council will consider whether their direct staff to bring back an ordinance for consideration of final adoption at its next meeting. Does any member of this council wish to abstain from participating in this hearing? Alright, seeing none, back to you Jonathan.
Alright, good evening again, mayor, members of council. I'm going to keep this one brief because I think everyone on this body knows the efforts that we've been conducting in the Leviton Tax Increment District. So tonight, we're presenting to you the proposed 11th amendment to the Leviton Tax Increment Finance Plan. Because of both ORS 457 as well as the Leviton Tax Increment Plan that is currently existing. Any expansion over 1% requires a substantial amendment and any project over 500,000 based on our plan requirements requires a substantial amendment. Four months ago, we outlined both what a minor amendment was, which we already approved, and what a substantial amendment is. So in 1995 and also 1998, excuse me, 1988 and 1995, Leviton was extended and so any additional acreage, uh, is over the 1%. So we automatically follow substantial amendment. As I noted earlier, Leviton is not collecting tax increment finance. It ceased collection in 2010. It's just an existing plan document that this body, as well as the Walton Development Commission, can use the remaining tax increment finance funds that is dedicated to the TDC because in 2010, overlapping taxing districts got their share. So this is the city's share. The proposed amendment is to include 7.88 acres. There is no maximum indebtedness increase. And on the right-hand side is to add the Herman Road Extension Project, which is a project that the city has been working on for some time now. It is currently in design, uh, considerations, I think at 45% based on what Mike has told me. And this is going to allocate the remaining TDC TIF funds of about $3.9 million to this project. And that's it.
Alright, thank you Jonathan. Uh, at this point, can you, thank you. Are there anyone, is there anyone in the public who would like to, uh, testify in favor of this substantial amendment? Do you have anyone there, Bates in the poll center?
No one at the poll center, man, and no one's notified me about speaking about this.
Alright, so, uh, throw it out there again, anyone out there who would like to, uh, testify in favor of the substantial amendment? Go ahead and just yell out. Alright, hearing none. Are any members of the public who would like to testify in opposition to this substantial amendment? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on the substantial amendment and open the floor to questions to staff. Councilor Pratt?
Well, uh, well, I just want to commend you for this idea because number one, I've been on Herman Road and the road has run out on a biking and it's pretty scary. And number two, every year when we, um, have our, um, budget meetings, it just irks me that we have to pay someone the tune of $10,000 for the required audit for this area. So my question to you, Jonathan, is how long do you foresee this will be? Just an estimate till this district is, this Herman Road thing is done and district is fully closed and the funds are used up?
So I see Kim is on this call. I'm going to let her answer that, uh, particular timeline and then I'll answer the district's closure.
Good evening, um, Councilor Pratt. The project is being done with Mike McCarthy in engineering and it should go to bid this next spring. And I expect that the construction will then run into 2023. So it'll start construction late spring, early summer of '22 and then go into '23. It should be done.
And then the closure will be based on that final, uh, check being cut to the contractor, whoever, uh, is the last check to be cut. And then it will follow a similar process as we get curbed, which will be at ordinance for termination.
All right. Other questions for staff? Um, I'm just going to, can you get, in a, hopefully quickly, Jonathan, explain the slide that you had about that this, this is just a transfer of money. We did get a letter from concerned citizen thinking we were like reopening this urban renewal zone. We're start collecting taxing from financing and, you know, you know, taxes would be deferred again. And I, uh, I'm assuming based on what you said and what I know is that that's not the case here. This, you know, the urban renewal zone is pretty much done, closed. We have got some money left over that we're going to put towards these improvements. But once that's done, we can totally shut down this urban renewal zone, correct?
That is correct. The, the funds are already in the Leventon Project Fund. It just is, it's a line item transfer.
Right. So this is just allowing us to put that $2 million towards Herman Road?
Correct.
Yep. Just for folks that were questioning if we're reopening the zone and going to start freezing things again. It's status quo there, we're just transferring money.
Correct.
All right. So if there are no further questions, I have a sample motion here. Uh, the simple motion is I move to advance ordinance number 1459 dash 21 to the August 23rd, 2021 council meeting for consideration for adoption by the city council.
It's almost.
I think it was, uh, Council Hilliard, then Council Brooks. Sorry, Brad. Sorry, Council Pratt, you're a millisecond off. Kind of like the Olympics, just, you know, a half a second. Makes all the difference. All right. So I have a motion and a second to, uh, uh, advance ordinance 1459 dash 21 to, uh, our August 23rd council meeting. Any discussion on those motions? All right. Seeing none, uh, Councilor Sacco?
Aye.
Councilor Pratt?
Aye.
Council Hilliard?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Councilor Reyes?
Hello?
Yep. Is it aye?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's aye.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Uh, Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also, so it's unanimous. Thank you. All right. So moving on to general business. We've still got more stuff. All right. Item number one in general business, consideration of ordinance 1457 dash 21 relating to building codes. So who's taking up this discussion? All my people are dropping off here now, so, uh, there's Kim. All right, Kim, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, our building officials could not be here tonight, but this ordinance that is before you is just a regular updating of our code adopting the state, uh, changes to the building code and the fire code. So that's basically what it is. I think it's been before you several times and I believe somebody from the fire department may be here.
I just saw, uh, Steve Foster just popped in.
Yes. So I don't know, uh, Mr. Foster, if you have anything you would like to add?
No, thank you. Uh, just here in case there's any questions. I know it's been a long meeting, so, uh, hope it goes quickly.
So questions for Kim on this, uh, ordinance? All right. So do I have a motion?
Motion that we adopt ordinance 1457 dash 21.
Second.
Just to back up.
No, we have to do.
Ordinance, yeah.
That's first and second reading, yeah.
Right. Sorry, that's what I was trying to say. I think you're making a motion for first reading by title only. It was, I meant to, um, make a motion for first reading by title only for ordinance 1457 dash 21.
Second.
That's my girl.
So I have a motion, a second for first reading by title only of ordinance 1457 dash 21. Any discussions on those motions? All right. Council Hilliard?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Uh, Council Reyes? You might have lost her.
Yes. No, I'm here. Yeah.
You're just down to the bottom right corner now. All right. Council President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also, so that is unanimous. All right. Item number two, consideration of resolution number.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, second reading.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, no, wrong.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. I first have to do the reading.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'll, I'll read, I'll read fast. Ordinance number 1457 dash 21, an ordinance relating to building codes, amending Twalton Municipal Code four dash one dash three one zero to adopt updates to the state building codes and declaring an emergency.
So. May I now make a second motion, or a motion for second reading by title only for ordinance 1457 dash 21? I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second for second reading of ordinance 1457 dash 21. Any discussion? Council Hilliard?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
All right. I vote yes also.
And me too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting punch drunk here, Jesus. And Council President Grimes votes aye also. So it's unanimous to have a second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1457 dash 21, an ordinance relating to building codes, amending Twalton Municipal Code four dash one dash three one zero to adopt updates to the state building codes and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1457 dash 21. I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance 1457 dash 21. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, let's see if we can nail this one correctly without me flubbing it. Council Hilliard?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Woo-hoo. All right. The resolution is adopted. Uh, ordinance is adopted. Wow, so close. So, so ordinance 1457 dash 21 is adopted unanimously. All right. Item number two, consideration of resolution, thank God, not an ordinance, number 5565 dash 21, adopting Twalton's Housing Production Strategy and Housing Production Strategy Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. I'm here joined by Karen Pearl Fox, Senior Housing Program Analyst. Um, unfortunately, a member of our project team, Erin Engman, associate planner, couldn't be here this evening, but she was part of the project. I'll most share screen. Okay. And I trust you can all see the presentation now. Thank you. Um, so just before I get started in, into the presentation, I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the final housing production strategy. Um, just want to note for the benefit of the council that this was, this project was funded, uh, consultant assistant for this project was funded through a grant from D L C D. So we did, um, spend quite a bit of staff time on this, but, um, overall, the project was grant funded. And so really pleased to be able to say that. Um, just as far as the overview, tonight's presentation will give just a little bit of background, some recap of key points and then some highlights of what the goals in the housing production strategy are, briefly next steps, and then finally our request for adoption. Um, so again, you've seen this slide several times before. This, um, 12 and 2040 implementation slide started with the 12 and tomorrow visioning, um, last in 2014 through to the code update in 2018 with emerging issues coming out of the code update, um, the policy prioritization. And then finally, we're in the implementation phase, which, um, we're starting through checking off the boxes there on the housing production strategy via this evening. And then later this fall, we'll be back with the middle cap, middle code, middle housing code update, excuse me. Um, so again, with our process, this is the timeline where we started off in, uh, late 2020 with the housing element adoption into the comprehensive plan and then, um, some information gathering in the interim resulting in the draft report, um, with housing strategies and implementation. Um, we went through a public review process, including several meetings with the planning commission, um, as well as some stakeholder outreach to get public input. And then we're here, um, on schedule and on time delivering the housing production strategy to you. Um, just to recap of House Bill 2001, so the House Bill 2001 is passed in 2019. Um, it applies to all cities in Oregon. Um, there's specific requirements applicable to cities over, um, 10,000 and then what are called large cities, um, which are cities inside the metro urban growth boundary or cities over 25,000 have, um, some of the other requirements. And so essentially what the housing production strategy, um, is required to do is it's required to take our most recent housing needs analysis, which fortunately we did very recently, um, and translate it into, um, a document that has a future commitment to evaluate and implement policies, um, or strategic actions to address the housing needs that were identified in that housing needs analysis. Um, so again, as I mentioned, um, the engagement with the community occurred in the 12 and 2040 process since we had a lot of great information that fed into this exercise. Um, we also did some stakeholder outreach as part of this project. And then like I mentioned, four meetings, um, for discussion input with the planning commission. And then we've also had a couple of check-ins with you, most recently in June, to provide updates and get feedback from you all. Um, and at this point, I will turn it over to Karen Pearl Fox, Senior Housing Program Analyst. Hi, you're muted, Karen.
I can't hear anything.
Um, I, I think she's still muted.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I just didn't know if it was me because I've been having a hard time hearing people all night.
Um, I'll give her another second.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, thanks, Karen.
Okay. Yeah, there was some problem going on. Sorry about that. Okay, so, um, just want to backtrack just a little bit from this slide. Um, there were a few, a couple of things I wanted to mention. Um, so City of Twalton was one of just three cities that were awarded the grant funding from D L C D in 2020, which was an honor, and it was to prepare an H P S prototype. And we started the project in October 2020 and worked with city staff and consultant Eco Northwest and submitted the completed H P S report to D L C D in mid-June 2020. Uh, I also wanted to mention that we had two work sessions with city council in addition to the four meetings with the planning commission. Um, okay, there are 12 goals in the housing production strategy, all with strategic actions, some with one or two and some with more than that, uh, which support each of the goals. And altogether, there are 50 strategic actions. Those shown are some of the examples. The full slate of strategic actions, however, is under each goal can be found in the H P S report itself. So here are some highlights of the goals and strategic actions, starting with the two that you see. Uh, goal one is affordable housing development for households earning between 0% to 20% of median family income. And it includes a variety of strategic actions related to developing incentives and acquiring funding resources for this housing. Goal two encourages affordable home ownership and includes strategic actions to remove barriers and to partner with a nonprofit to provide home ownership education. Next slide. Goals three and four focus on preservation of regulated affordable housing and naturally occurring affordable housing. Next slide. And goal five focuses on housing for underserved communities. One of its strategic actions is to develop an equitable funding action plan that is actually one of the things that we've applied for funding for. And, uh, goal six focuses on workforce housing. So this is not just affordable housing, but the potential to do also some workforce housing for households earning between 61 and 80% of M F I. It includes both renters and owners. An example of the strategic action here is partnerships with employers on employer assisted housing. Next slide. So, uh, I'm not going to read through the rest of these, given the limited time, uh, but we'll move just visually through, uh, the remaining goals. Here's goal seven and eight, uh, housing stabilization and housing rehab. And goal nine and 10 are accessible and specialized design and mixed-use housing and redevelopment. And goal 11 is regulatory and zoning changes. And finally, goal 12 is transportation and public infrastructure. I trust that all of you have read these, you've seen them before. Um, so my apologies for not going through all of them in detail, but I think you probably all appreciate it getting home a little, uh, pretty soon. Steve, go ahead.
Thanks, Karen. Um, and so you may recognize this slide before, the intent of it is just to identify the fact that the various goals and strategies, depending on their level, um, have different impacts on the level, um, of affordable housing, uh, impact. So I just wanted to re-highlight that. We'll get into that as we work with you as the council in the future to implement this plan. Um, so our next steps is that we, uh, will very shortly, um, begin to implement the strategic actions based on the six-year schedule in the report. Um, I think as Karen noted, we've applied for additional grant funding for future work. Um, staff is committing to providing a biennial report to council on progress. Of course, we'll have, um, regular interactions as we work through evaluation of many of the strategies. And then as part of the rule, we're required to, um, update and report to D L C D and adjust as needed. Um, I think we've mentioned this before, but, um, these strategies are not set in stone, um, nor is performance of these strategies going to be penalized. Um, so last but not least, um, staff respectfully requests that the council adopt resolution number 5565 dash 21, which will adopt the final housing production strategy report and then direct staff to begin the evaluation and implementation process that I mentioned on the prior slide. And again, thank you for your support.
Well, thank you, Steve and Karen. Any questions for Steve and Karen? Council Brooks?
Uh, thank you both for your work. I mean, it's an obvious, really big need that we have as far as workforce housing and affordable housing. And, um, I mean, the housing crisis has just gotten. as far as workforce housing and affordable housing, and, I mean, the housing crisis has just gotten terrible in our area. I guess my question is, because of the conversations that we've been having, my concerns are about, I mean, I'm going to be at congestion, 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 I think. And, and so when we do more concentrated builds, and we have, and let's just talk about it, this regional build-out with the urban growth boundaries and nowhere for these cars and stuff to go, I know that some of the idea is that workforce housing, hopefully, people will be going to work closer by so there's less my traffic migration. But I still am concerned about the concentration of, of building and, and the road being able to, like, I just feel that we're in this bad place with not being able to move around the city, and, anyway. So that's my question or concern, I guess.
I can respond to that. So what's interesting and a little bit different about our proposal as opposed to other cities that were also awarded grant funding is that we recognize that there were limitations in the city of Tuolton with regard to the flood plain in particular, but also because of the level of build-out that there already is in the city. So what could we do with the housing production strategy? And what, what did work for DLCD is that we were allowed to look at programs, projects, partnerships, and policies across the board. So it didn't have to be just about production, and really, actually, a relatively small part of it is about production, and a lot of it is about all kinds of workarounds in order to preserve the affordable housing that we do have, to welcome some that is coming, and we know SEPA's coming, most likely. But there's a lot of other things going on here in terms of building partnership and education and programs. For example, we're already running a targeted outreach program for rental assistance and utility assistance, and it's, it's been going on during this eviction moratorium expiration that occurred recently. And so there, there will be a lot of creative modes in addition to production. We hope some production happens, but the truth is, it may be more limited than in other cities because of the limitations of our city's construct.
Thank you, and then can I ask a follow-up question? That got my mind going. So I know that we have the census tract of where there's more, I don't know exactly the term that they use for the census tract, but down with, with people that would have more housing needs, and.
Qualified, qualified census tracts.
That's qualified census tract, thank you very much. So I have curiosity if there's anything, like, if there's ideas in there that you have for, ideas for that, and then my, my second question, I'm just going to ask it right away, is that we're looking at the, the mixed use, hopefully, for the second, I'm burned out, I'm sorry. The second plan that we're looking at, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
And is there information that would be helpful? I'm concerned that there's going to be pushback on that from entities outside of ourselves, taxing district entities, and I want to know if there's any information or supports from the work that you're doing that can help us argue for the need for mixed-use housing when we go to explore the next district in the more north part of our city. Those are my two questions, thank you very much for your work, you both.
Thank you. With regard to the qualified census tracts, there are two. One is in the downtown area, and one is in the Bridgeport area, so they're close by each other. And those actually, certain programs give kind of extra points for addressing the issues of those particularly underserved communities in those areas. So that actually is something in some, to a certain degree, is already happening with the rental assistance program that we're working on, because that is one of the benefits. There's extra points, if you're in the qualified census tract, let me just say it in that simple way. With regard to mixed use, so we do have, one of our goals is focused on mixed use. We also will be looking at affordable housing, particularly in the town center area and surrounding area, because there's so many opportunities in that area in terms of making connections for people. The opportunity is that when you're in an area where there's a lot of services around you, you get to benefit by those services, or when parks are around you, you get to benefit by that. When schools, good schools are around you, you get to benefit by that. So there's a preference to locate affordable housing in places where there's access to those types of services from the city. Mixed use, we're doing potentially some work in, in the code to make code changes to make that more available or possible. It's also potentially part of, excuse me, urban renewal, but that's a conversation that has yet to be had, so that will be coming down the road in terms of the town center area in particular. I don't know that I can, I'm not quite sure what you were asking about the taxing districts in relationship to mixed use, are you asking if there's certain types of resources, funding resources, or what, what were you hearing in on there?
Well, I think that the idea is to help support the argument that mixed use would be valuable in the taxing districts, so that we, from my mind, and I think that you guys have the technical expertise, but from my mind, sometimes competing taxing districts have objections because they think that we're not generating enough income. So at the same time, from what I understand, and from the way that build-outs that are more successful now are, mixed use has an opportunity for more income, better valuation, in certain kinds of ways, walkable neighborhood, you know, and less traffic, just all those kinds of things that contribute to, to contribute to indirect as well as direct financial releasing of funds into the communities, so to speak. So I, I'm just curious about with this study, if there's any salient points I think are really important to bring to that conversation, and so I'm curious about that.
It depends on what, which financial resources we go after. We're going after or exploring, evaluating quite a variety of financial resources, including the construction excise tax, MPT, which is multi-unit planning, and potential incentives as well, which would be reducing costs to developers through incentives. And so there may be possibility, I don't, I don't know for sure at this moment, there may be a possibility to do a matchup with mixed use with one of those resources.
Thank you.
Other questions for Steve and Karen? All right. So. How do you feel about adopting resolution 5565-21?
I'd like, sorry. Go ahead. Okay, I'd like to move that we adopt resolution number 5565-21.
I second that.
So I have a motion of second to adopt resolution 5565-21, any discussion on the motions? All right, Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Council Communications, actually, we had nothing pulled from agendas, from the agenda, so there's nothing there, so Council Communications. Council Pratt.
I just want to thank the city staff for putting together the cooling centers so quickly. I just pulled up my phone, and on Wednesday, it's going to be, it says 104, Thursday 108, and Friday 106. So the pole center will be open Wednesday through Friday from 8:00 to 8:00, and on Saturday from 1:00 to 8:00, and then the library will be open Wednesday through Saturday, 10:00 to 8:00. Both these cooling centers will be open, but you will need to bring your mask.
And Sherilyn, it's going to be put out on social media in the Washington County distributor out there, plus I know all of us will have it on our Facebook, it's on Good Stuff, correct?
It's already started, the, yeah, so.
Terrific. Any other, Council Communications? Council Brooks.
Yeah, I want people to be careful as well with the heat, and I just want to say something from today's conversation that this, this situation with building over wetlands is not just happening here in this city for the county. This is happening in King City, this is happening in Tigard, and if citizens are concerned about, about selecting places and doing due diligence with selection, to be watching these things and to be pushing not only our council, but the county for better environmental stewardship during this time of climate action, to be looking at these kind of temperatures, and going forward with business as usual when we're thinking about land use is a difficult, it's, it's time to make some changes. So I'm proud of the work that we're going to be doing, and the second thing I want to say is that we know that there's a algae bloom that's very dangerous to dogs right now in the Willamette. We have a slick over the Tuolton River. There is not blue-green algae found there yet, but there is information on the OHA website, the Oregon Health Authority website, and there's pictures of what it looks like. So the opportunity is ripe for that to happen here, so please be safe. Please do your homework and look on the websites to know what to identify, and if you do see anything that looks like blue-green algae, please report it to, through the Oregon Health Authority on the blue-green, and you can just search blue-green algae. So I know there's a lot of people that use the river, and I just want everyone to be safe and healthy. There's so many different things right now to be concerned about, and, and we just want everyone in our city to be safe and healthy, so, thanks.
Here, Council Sacco.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I did attend the concert in Tuolton Community Park this past weekend, and that there are some events coming up. We have a concert on August 20th, and then have movies in the park, and also Viva Tuolotons coming up as well. And I just wanted to say, by attending the concert in the park, everybody social distanced just naturally, which I thought was really great to see, and people were wearing their masks when they were getting up to go to the bathroom, and maybe that they were going to be in closer proximity of other people. So I thought that was just really great to see, and so I hope that continues in the events coming up with the concert movie, and then Viva Tuoloton, which is three separate smaller events this year, which I thought was done very creatively on August 22nd, Wednesday, August 25th, and then Saturday, August 28th. So I encourage folks to look up those events and attend responsibly as well.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else in communication? All right, that brings us to a German. I assume we're all in favor of a journey for this evening, it's been a long one, appreciate anyone's comments and thoughts and for tonight, and again, as we just mentioned, you know, we still, the COVID variants are still running around town, so please wear a mask indoors, even if you're vaccinated, just to be safe, and respect those retailers that might be putting signs back up about wearing masks indoors. Don't, please don't get into a argument with those stores, those retailers, that's their policy, it's their store, so you should, you know, abide by their policies. With that, is anyone in favor of a journey for this evening, raise your hands. It's unanimous, good evening, thank you everyone for attending tonight, have a safe evening.